Let's begin our space session for tonight. And once again, uh it's good to see everyone here tonight stay with us. And we are very honoured to have our CTO tonight as our special guest. He's Mr Wasik who travelled all the way from Pakistan to be here with us in Kuching this week. And here joining our DBO tonight. Wasik is also one of our founding members of D Bazaar. And together with Jason, Jason is our digital marketer. He has been with D Bazaar since day one, together with Mr Ken. So, um, Mr Wasik, yeah, I saw Mr Wasik is here.
Yes, hello everyone, it's a pleasure to be among you guys and uh. I'm very excited to speak to all of you today, so I hope we have a good time today, thank you.
Yeah, alright, thank you, Mr Wasik. So basically, I've gathered some question from the affiliates and also. Uh, our users then they want to know about, so I will ask all of our founder team members. And hopefully you can solve it, right?
Uh, Aaron, Aaron.
Yeah.
Um, I think that for the questioning, we'll leave it to Jason. Jason will be our host for tonight and then uh. So Jason will ask the question and then what's it and I will try to answer as much as possible.
Alright, sure.
Thanks.
Okay, so let us begin.
Yes.
Okay, so first question. Uh, Wasik, can you briefly tell us about yourself, uh, some of your experiences and how you started with D Bazaar?
Okay, sure, I would love to do that. So, um, I've been in the IT industry for almost twelve years now. I started off in two thousand ten and I started off as a freelancer. Um, I was usually getting projects online and doing them until in two thousand thirteen, I moved to Malaysia. And I was here for my undergrad and then um during that period, I started working for a few local companies as well. Uh, but in the meanwhile, I was uh still doing lots of projects and uh via freelancing. And some of them grew to be, uh, you know, uh, some big projects, big companies. So I was, uh, I was and still am affiliated with uh most of them. We are still, uh, you know, doing projects for them. So, uh, around two thousand sixteen, I launched a small startup in Kuching by the name of Planet Kuching. So that's where my startup journey and my entrepreneurial journey started. And it was all, uh, you know, based in Kuching and that's when I met Mr Kent. So, um, when I started Planet Kuching, it was, um, I had no clue how business is done. I had no clue what direction to take this business into. Uh, all, all it was is that I had an idea and I knew, knew how to do the, you know, the website and the whole system for it. But that was the extent of it, I had no clue how to run a business and you know how the operations are run and so on. So I was really struggling during the first few months and that's when Mr Ken came in. So he really streamlined everything and that's where uh Planet Kuching, uh, you know, actually took off and saw its glory days. So that's where, um, uh, you know, how I met Mr Kent. And then, um, fast forward to a few years later, uh, when Mr Ken conceived the idea for D Bazaar. He discussed it with me and, and I knew, uh, right away that this is going to be a winner. So I definitely wanted to be a part of it and I asked the same to Mr Kent and then, uh, we teamed up, uh, to, you know, start working on D Bazaar. So, uh, yeah, uh, that's, um, I think keeping it as brief as possible. Uh, this is my journey, my personal journey and my, uh, journey with D Bazaar as well. Uh, nice to meet you too, Mr Francis Wong.
Okay, thank you for the.
Let me just, uh, Jason, let me just add to, add to, uh, what was it just said, so. So was it, uh, when you started your business, how old were you?
Okay, uh, first business, I think I started at, uh, twenty-one.
Twenty-one years old?
Yeah.
So let me just share, uh, so, so when I met you, you're what, twenty?
I was twenty-two.
Yeah, that, that was, uh, that was what I find so amazing about this young man that, uh, at the age of twenty-two. And he, he already, you know, doing something, something contributing to the society. So, so I thought that, hey, this is the guy that, uh, that I, you know, I, I can really work with and maybe can help him. But, uh, so, so in a way, then, then I got tricked into doing Planet Kuching. Oh, as I was semi-retired, I don't really want to get into business, but, uh, I thought this, uh, this business was interesting, but. But I think, you know, everything, everything, I think, uh, there's a purpose in life, uh, you know, when you, uh. Certain time of the life, then, you know, when you're not supposed to be resting, uh, retiring. And, 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 and God will just lead you to something else. So, so what I, what I found out was like, uh, this young man is amazing. And I think, I think, uh, it's the idea of starting the business at the age of twenty-two. And then, uh, and then what I find out also about this young man is, uh, he has, he has a busy, he is a business minded. Uh, programmer, you know, system developer. And, and so that is what, that is what I see about this young man, that's why, you know, when we have D Bazaar. Uh, working on D Bazaar project and once I approve, uh, you know, that's why I went to, uh, I went to what's it, hey? I think we have something big going, you know, I want you to be part of the team. And so that's, uh, that's how, how things started and then, oh, just, uh, just to also introduce that Jason. I also met Jason, uh, during my Planet Kuching years. And so Jason, uh, uh, came to me because he was, uh, you know, he was doing, uh, digital marketing. And so what I, again, what I find out was that, oh, this, uh, you know, and this, Jason is really, uh, out there to, to help. A lot of merchants, he's not there to make money. So what I find out about this, this, uh, young man also, uh, Jason, when I met you or what, you were thirty-three, right?
No, when you met me, I was about twenty-eight, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, wow, that's, uh, so, yeah, you know, so, so, so we have, uh, what I see about these two young men, uh, like, you know. Their, their, their intention is always to help, the intention is always to do good. Uh, I think one of the things is about, you know, self motivation. I think Jason then, uh, also came out, uh, from, uh, his previous other company and then started doing his own. So, uh, what this is what I like to see, uh, you know, yeah, young man, you are, you are here to. I think when you start with the intention of helping people. I think it's just when you have a positive mindset, you just attract a lot of people with a positive mindset. And, and so that's how, you know, D Bazaar is about, uh, attracting, you know, uh, our affiliate is our. You know, partner in the business, so that's how, you know, we're able to attract a lot of positive minded people. And, and this is, you know, this is a wonderful team. So, yeah, Jason, I'll pass the time back to you.
Okay, thank you for the great answers, so let's move on to our next question. So next question, have you ever developed anything as complicated or similar to what D Bazaar has now?
Hmm, okay, uh, before I answer that, I would like to thank Mr Kent for his kind words. He always speaks very highly of me, something that I feel like I do not deserve. So, um, yeah, I, I'm sure you all know how great of a guy he is, so I won't get much into that. But he has, uh, helped me shape my life in, in, in a much greater way than, uh, you know, than is visible to the naked eye. So I really thank him for that, but anyways, uh, moving on to, um, Jason's question, so. Something as big as D Bazaar, so the thing is with D Bazaar, D Bazaar is something really unique. Um, I don't think so another model like D Bazaar exists anywhere in the world, so let alone me, no one else. As you know, done something as big as this, talking about the magnitude of the software or, uh, you know, the size of the software. Yes, I have developed other software which are, uh, you know, similar size. Um, some even, uh, have more, uh, you know, uh, load. Um, so we have this one e-learning platform in Canada. It's the only platform approved by the Ministry of Transport of Ontario. Uh, it is for the driving schools over there, so seventy-two driving schools are using that software. And they have around twelve thousand students enrolling every month. And each student has to spend twenty hours on the software. So that's a lot of screen time, that's a lot of interaction with the website when, uh, you know, uh, like, let's say. Um, on Facebook, on Instagram, on, um, other platforms, the average time spent by a user per day is, um. So let's do a monthly comparison because that will be more significant, so a monthly comparison is around, uh, four to five hours. Now that's where you get, you know, your entertainment from, uh, and so on. Um, but with this platform, the users have to spend twenty hours minimum to get their, uh, you know, job done. And usually it's more than that as well. So magnitude wise, yes, we have, I have developed other softwares which are, you know, um, uh, in, in, in the similar size as D Bazaar. But a model as complex and as integrated and as, uh, you know, uh, unique as D Bazaar, of course not. It's one of a kind and that's, that's what, uh, as a programmer, so as a technology enthusiast. That is the biggest thing that attracted me. So being in technology, what our job, primary job is to solve problems, to solve challenges with the help of technology, with the help of. Algorithms with the help of code and, uh, and, you know, uh, apps and websites and so on. So that's where my interest and that's what really, you know, appeals me and, uh, you know, drives me and motivates me. So looking at, you know, how big of a challenge D Bazaar was and how no one else has, you know, um, even dared to venture into such, um. Uh, such a model, it was, uh, really, uh, interesting thing for me to, you know, get started on this, that definitely. Not only do I want to be a part of it, I want to, you know, crack this baby open and, uh, you know, get a good, uh, system out there and running. So, yeah.
Yes, that's a very good story answer.
Yeah, Jason, not only, not only he has to crack it, crack this thing open, uh, he has to, uh. Sometime I will just call him like, because the time difference is about three hours. So sometime I will just, just call him, I was it, you know, uh, we got problem, we SOS, we need help. So it could be like three o'clock, five o'clock, uh, his time and so he has to answer my call.
Yep. Most definitely, most definitely. So responsibilities, you know, um, is definitely, uh, a big, big part of, you know, um, success of any business. Or any individual or any team. So of course you can't run away because you know, it's, it's a different time zone or, you know. You're sleeping with something else, you're responsible for, you know, the earnings and, uh, uh, daily lives of thousands of people. So people who are using D Bazaar, people who are earning with D Bazaar, they rely on us, they depend on us. So we can't leave them hanging because we want to sleep. So responsibility for our affiliates, for our customers, for our merchants comes first.
Agreed.
Yes.
Yep, so I agree with what you said because this is a once in a lifetime kind of opportunity and this is a. The only kind of, the only of its kind in the market. So when Ken approached me, this is one of the reasons why I joined and I'm still here today as well. Because once you have an opportunity to be part of something like this, you grab onto it and don't let go.
Of course. I agree.
Okay, so moving on to our next question. Uh, what are the challenges you and your team has to overcome when developing this kind of massive system?
Okay, uh, I think there are many challenges that we face on a daily basis, but, um, if I have to pinpoint. Uh, one of them is, you know, making, uh, you know, the overall experience more smooth. Because the thing is that the system is growing, um, faster than we anticipated. The user load is growing faster than we anticipated, the database is growing faster than we anticipated. So that is a real challenge every day to make sure that, you know, this growing, uh, you know, mammoth that we have with us, you know, it functions properly. As more data goes in, as more users come in, definitely there are, you know, um, it's the same machine which now has more load on it. In, in many ways, I'm not just talking about, you know, traffic, you know, um, the, the number of transactions, the number of, uh, payments increase and so on. So that's definitely one of the big, uh, you know, challenges that we face in, you know, uh, maintaining, running and upgrading this, uh, system. The second is definitely, you know, because it has a very intricate, uh, financial system inside it. So money is involved, okay? So that is definitely a very, very big challenge because, you know, sometimes, um, with some platforms and some websites, things can, you know, go here and there. You can recover it and so on, not with D Bazaar. When finances are involved and definitely everything has to be, uh, very precise, um, very well, uh, you know, uh. Has, has to has good checks, uh, good audit, good accounting system. Definitely, these are some things that, you know, that really, uh, so we have a good team of, uh, uh, cons, uh, you know, consultants who are accountants who help us along the way. But sometimes even them, I see them, you know, they're, they're, they're running multimillion dollar companies, they are, you know, employed in multimillion dollar company. But even then, sometimes they also freeze, they need to go back to the whiteboard and, you know, uh, sort out what formulas and what things we need to be, we need to have in place. Uh, because of how D Bazaar is structured, because of how complex it is, it's not just that, you know, you make a sale, you, you pay the merchant, you get your profit. Nah, that's not the case with D Bazaar. So unlike any other commerce or any other e-commerce, D Bazaar is very different. So that's where, uh, you know, uh, one of the biggest challenge, uh, comes from and that is what we are always trying to, you know. Learn more, improve ourselves and improve the system and take in feedback and, you know, uh, streamline the things as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so moving on to another next question. Uh, so can you elaborate more on like, uh, what is the main difference between D Bazaar one point O and two point O system?
Uh, okay, I think the most visible difference between D Bazaar one and D Bazaar two was, um, you know, the difference between, uh, the website and the mobile app. So with D Bazaar two, we decided to make this, um, you know, uh, mobile, mobile app oriented because, you know, mobile apps are handy, they are more personalized. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's, um, the experience overall is a lot better. So talking about that, uh, the biggest difference between one point O and two point O was, you know. Learning from all of the mistakes that, you know, or all of the challenges or all of the feedback that we got and improving. The, uh, overall, uh, you know, experience of our users, our affiliates and our merchants. So let's say, uh, one of the examples that I can give you on top of my head is that previously, our affiliate system was focused towards, uh, territories, not humans. But then we restructured the whole thing to be focused on humans. That's why now, um, when you were seeing the presentation, you could see that now we have different levels of, uh, you know, uh, memberships and how they are interlinked. How the hierarchy setup, previously this was done differently. So we took it from, you know, a territory, uh, uh, you know, focused software to a more human based. Software and a human based approach and this was all again by, uh, the feedback and the cooperation that we got from, uh, our affiliates, merchants and users. So this is just one example I'm giving you, so we've got tons of feedback. We, um, figured out lots of things that work on paper, don't work in real life. So that's, those are all of the things that we, you know, uh, sat down, wrote down, took feedback, um, uh, how to say polish them. And, you know, refine them and then, uh, we started development, uh, keeping those things in, in focus and, uh. That's how, uh, you know, D Bazaar two, uh, came out.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so, Wasik, it has been two years since the D Bazaar app was already on the market. Uh, why are there still issues and bugs? And then is this, uh, common for any systems of this kind?
Uh, okay, that's a difficult question, so, yeah. So anyways, uh, the thing is that, um, yes, uh, there are, uh, some issues that happen, uh, sometimes. Um, the reason behind it is because, uh, you know. As I was explaining earlier, D Bazaar is a unique system, nothing like this, you know, um. Existed before, there's nothing that we can look at to take inspiration from, there's nothing we can, you know, copy. Everything has to be, you know, learned by our own self. So what, what's happening is that, you know, we come up with the process. And then we implement it and then we get feedback on it and then we refine, 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 refine until, you know. The best and final version comes out of it, so this is how, uh, D Bazaar, D Bazaar is being developed and this is why this happens. One of the other reasons is that, you know, because it's, it's a machine with a lot of moving parts, okay? So definitely every moving part needs to be, you know, properly oiled and made sure that, you know, it's running smoothly. Sometimes small things here and there for many factors, many factors. It's, uh, not just the software alone, yes, uh, most of the issues do come from softwares, but, you know, sometimes. Other issues, um, things which are not in our control, natural disasters or, you know, things like that, like. One time we were dealing with fire and our service was out for, you know, a very long time. So things which are out of our hand or out of our control might affect as well. But every time anything happens, what, what we as a team make sure is that it does not happen again. We put our effort to it, we put our mind to it that how can we make this thing foolproof? How can we make it in a way that, uh, you know, what did we learn from this and how can we, you know, uh, patch up the system or patch up an operational. Uh, loophole or, uh, you know, patch up a software bug so that, you know, this does not happen again. So this is, uh, you know, our approach towards it and this is why the system is improving day by day, stabilizing more and more. So, um, talking about, you know, whether it happens with other systems or not, is it a common thing? I would, um, personally, um. I don't, I wouldn't want to leverage that, you know, because it happens with others, so it's fine if it happens with us. It should not happen with us, we should be better than them and that is what we are trying to achieve. But for the sake of the argument, I would still, uh, like to show you, I'll share my screen. Um, so if anybody cannot see my screen, please let me know, I started sharing it now. Um, so what I'll show you is over here that I'll go to Google and I'll just write Facebook bugs, okay? And you can see over here, I've opened up this, uh, platform, which is developers.facebook.com. So first search result on Google, anybody can Google it and see this. You can see right now that in Facebook right now nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty bugs are currently reported. Nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty and this is not something that, you know, anybody can report a bug, no. This counter will only increase once this bug is reported. And it is checked by their inspection team and whether what you reported is correct or not, only then they will mark it as, yes, approved. This is a genuine bug which needs to be fixed. And this is over here where they are, they themselves are reporting this, that in the last thirty days, they've only managed to fix fifty-six percent of them. Forty-four percent or forty-three percent are still pending and they, um. More bugs will be coming in as well because in my experience, as much as I have, you know, every time I've checked, so we faced a few issues with Facebook as well. Uh, and we use this platform, that's how I know about it and that's why I know they display all of this over here. So every time I've seen this number does not go down drastically, sometimes it's, you know, fifteen thousand, sometimes it's twenty-two thousand, you know, goes keep going. More come in, there is all, then more come in, this is a constant thing going on and you can check for that as well. Similarly, let's, let's do another one, I'll go to Google bugs, okay? Now these are multi-billion dollar companies and, you know, they have the best infrastructure, thousands of employees and whatnot, they are the leaders of technology. So even they face these things, but again, we would want to be different from them, we don't want this to happen with us. So, um, let's look at Google, so Google has this program called Bug Hunter. So you can enroll in their program and find bugs for them, if you find bugs for them, they pay you. Unlike Facebook, you only report it, Google offers you a bounty, okay? You prep, collect and, you know, collect your bugs as digital trophies and unpaid rewards, paid rewards, okay? So Google has a program where if you break their software, if you find a bug, if you find a loophole, you tell them. Starting from a thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars is what they pay you only for finding a bug. It still has to be resolved by their own engineers and developers, okay? So you see, um, bugs are not something uncommon, um, with any software around the world. If I, if you look at the larger picture, what is happening more than, uh, you know, the development is that, you know, everyday new upgrades for everything are coming out. Let's say you get a new Android version, you get a new iOS version, the same way we get new software updates on our servers, okay? That might cause an issue, the base programming language that we are using, which is PHP, I'm not sure if anybody knows about that or not. And I'll try not to get any, you know, technical, um. They get upgrades as well, so every time there's an upgrade, there might be some things which are unseen, okay? Uh, or unanticipated that might happen. With having a software which is, you know, based, uh, mostly on, uh, you know, finances. The impact is, you know, definitely, I know that, uh, a bug in D Bazaar is different from a bug from any other software. If you can't search on Google for a while, you're fine, but if you can't make money, that's problematic. So that's why we try and that is what we are achieving, uh, trying to achieve, you know. That we should be the software which is, you know, um, as bug free as possible or, uh. At least we take it to the point where, uh, our daily operations are not disturbed at all. So that's what we are aiming for and that's what we are, uh, you know, trying to achieve.
Okay, so with, uh, with an app of this magnitude, uh, can you just give us an idea of, uh, what is the size of your development team? And, uh, how many are from science, how many members are there?
Hmm, okay, currently we have around fourteen people, uh, working for D Bazaar. Um, that is a team that I directly control. Uh, from science, we have additional four developers, uh, who are helping us, uh, with a few things. Uh, so, yeah, that's the size of the team, so including me, the technology department is almost fifteen, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Nineteen, sorry, not nineteen, yeah.
Okay. So, uh, can we expect, uh, D Bazaar three point O soon?
Sorry, I just, uh, forgot to add, sometimes we hire remote workers as well as needed, whenever there's more load or more things need to be done. We do hire, uh, remote workers for a few months as well, depending on, you know, if an upgrade is going on or something. So the team also varies from time to time.
Okay.
Yes.
So how big has the team ever gotten during any phase?
Uh, I don't remember on top of my head, but I think close to twenty-five.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so going back to the question just now, uh, can we expect D Bazaar three point O soon? Uh, what are the improvements we can expect to see?
As we, as we speak right now and, um, one of the big things that we are trying to achieve, uh, while I'm here, uh, in Kuching. Uh, is, uh, finalizing our roadmap for three point O. So there's lots of, you know, discussions going on, lots of people we are meeting and so on. So basically, the way I told you that, you know, from one point O to two point O, um, we went with all the feedback. So that's what we are trying to gather and do right now as well. And, uh, we're, uh, finding, um, what things in our system, you know, need more attention than we are giving them. Uh, what is the feedback of, um, individuals, you know, our affiliates, customers and merchants? And, um, along with that, we're also, you know, trying to figure out, um, you know. There are a few ideas on the table and those ideas might be little, you know, uh, again, to the nature of D Bazaar, unique, okay? Might be a little, you know, wild as well. The way, we're trying to, you know, figure out whether, you know, we're, we're out of our minds or, you know, this could be something interesting. So for now, whatever advice is that, you know, we, we sit back and, uh, we wait for a good, uh, you know, news. Because definitely something's cooking, something is cooking. So as soon as the, you know, Xco finalizes, we'll definitely lay out the plan of where we're taking D Bazaar with D Bazaar three.
Okay, alright. Uh, so another question is, um. Apps like, uh, Boost, Grab, Shopee, all these are mature apps that have been in the market for many, many years already. Compared to D Bazaar, which is still in our infancy stage, uh, what would you say is the estimated, estimated timeline? For us to be mature to a similar level or beyond?
Okay, the, the way I see that is that, um, you know, we, we first need to pinpoint which part of, uh. Shopee or Grab or, you know, any other platform are we trying to compete with, okay? Because the biggest part of D Bazaar is different than all three of these platforms. So my, when, when D Bazaar matures, um. It's, 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 it's not at the same level as Grab or Shopee or something, they are doing, they are into the normal business, they're into e-commerce, simple e-commerce, okay? If we wanna do e-commerce as well, I think we're way past that stage already, you know, with simple e-commerce, our model is quite different. So, um, I think the terms need to be, you know, defined more that, you know, what do we call maturity? Which stage do we call maturity and which, which, uh, you know, part of Grab or Shopee are we trying to compete with? So without that, I think the answer would be, uh, you know, unjustified. Um, but definitely the way we are, we are looking at is that if you talk about, you know, how aggressively they are expanding. And, um, how much of the global market share they have captured and, uh, you know, how many territories they have on the map. Uh, that, according to that, I can say that, you know, uh, with three point O. We will be launching a plan of territory expansion as well. I, 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 I hope I'm not saying something which I'm not supposed to, Mr Ken, I'm sorry about that, so.
Okay, okay, no.
So we, we do have. So we, we do have a territory expansion plan going forward with that. Now again, coming, coming to the point is that, you know, when it comes to commerce, commerce uh or e-commerce works almost the same way in all of the countries. Our um uh you know, model is more uh operations intensive. So when we are expanding territory, uh we have to do a little more effort than what, you know, Grab, Shopee and all of those other people do. We have to, you know, uh look at a lot of the local regulations and a lot of the ground realities. So uh yeah, we definitely have um you know, that in, 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 in our three point O plan expansion. So I think um we will be uh unveiling that as well with, with three point O, that how soon are we gonna be, you know? Up there a name which, you know, resonates with Grab and Shopee.
Okay, okay. So uh thank you for giving us a better understanding.
You're welcome.
Yep. So with that, uh I've come to the end of my questions. Um yeah, so do you have anything else you would like to add, to share with us?
Um just um just this, that uh you know. Uh where D Bazar, it has been an amazing journey and um all of the people that are in the call, I would really like to thank you for, you know, taking the time to listen to us. And uh I really hope that, you know, um soon uh we can meet in person as well. So now with the borders opening up, I'll be spending, I'll be more in Malaysia than anywhere else. Uh so yeah, I, I really hope now, you know, that um with, with three point O. Uh we will definitely be, you know, making a big bang. So yeah, that's all. And uh yeah, that's all.
Yeah, uh I was it, uh and Jason, uh just, you know, to, to sum up, to sum up, I think uh. Yeah, D Bazar, D Bazar, we have uh come, come a long way and again, it's thank to uh, thank to our, you know, teamwork together. Um not, not, not forgetting Maxine also, Maxine was also uh one of our, not as early as us, but. She is up there with us as the one of the founding members of uh D Bazar. And yeah, I, 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 I look forward to uh what three by all will be uh, will be more exciting. Uh I, but I think, I think we probably looking at another uh six month time as soon as, uh just to give you guys a timeframe. Uh but uh again, uh you know, we have come a long way and uh we have. We, we actually started from zero, guys, we actually started from zero, awesome, you know? And uh and, and we were in the beginning, just to share with you guys. Uh before, I think Jason, uh before November eleven, twenty twenty, before we launch our one point O system. We're still like, we're so like anxious, are we gonna get any order or are we gonna get? And uh right, and then, and then what we did was uh, and then we came out with the idea of, why don't we? Why don't we do a pre-launch, right? So Jason, we, we started with the uh uh countdown. Uh we, we actually, I was saying, I don't know if you remember, we, we actually wanted a ten days countdown. But, but because we have some issue with our system, then we, we, we ended up with only a five days countdown. And but also, what is so amazing, what is so amazing about our countdown was uh. You know, even though we were just like, you know, fresh, new kids on the block. Um um but we already have an idea of doing a countdown. It is the same year in twenty twenty, it was actually uh Alibaba and TD dot com. You know, they, they started, they, on that year, they started the countdown too. So what I'm saying is, uh even though we are new kids on the block, but the idea that we draw there. Was like, it took Alibaba has been around for how many years? Before twenty twenty, almost ten years, right? At least ten years. It took them uh ten years to come out with a countdown. And when we were doing, we would launch that, we would, we launched that D Bazar. Actually, we already doing something that they took them ten years, you know, to figure out the countdown day, but. We already started with our countdown. So yeah, so you know, the guys, what I'm saying that. D Bazar, you know, yes, we, we, we have a bumpy road. I, 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 I don't think any, any, any company, any startup. Uh has a smooth selling, you know, so, so I think bumpy road, this is, is, is expected, it's typical. Um but, but with our team, I think, uh you know, uh uh we definitely, our ideas, our ideas is up there. Um but so, so it's just a matter of getting, getting there. And we, we can be, we can be, uh you know, one of the uh major force in the industry, give us another. You know, three to five years, I think, I think we, we definitely will have a big impact in the, in the community, especially. You know, we are targeting to, uh you know, helping the community, community. You know, Jason first started, you know, he came to me, he said, Ken, hey, I can do this for you for free, you know? But, you know, I, 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 I like this, I, I, you know, I, you know, it, it's all about, you know, giving. I, I, I think it's more about giving and what's it, you know, uh I like this guy because he's more about. He, he, you know, he can, he can be answering my phone anytime in the morning, you know, before, before he wakes up, you know, like. Um I think, I think we all start with that intention of helping the company. I think that is what, that's what it is, it's gonna make. Uh an impact in the community and I think that is what is gonna make us a better team because we. We think of what we can give before, you know, we, we, we wanna take anything back. I think giving is more important. Than try to count, you know, every penny, so okay, I do this, I expect this, you know, so I think it's very important that we do this. Um and, and, and then the, the, the force of the positive energy would just extract more positive energy. Uh with the, with the intention or helping, I think uh uh. You know, you get a lot more in return, you know, like this, this is why we, I think this is why we are practicing and this is what D Bazar is all about. Helping reach out to the community, see what we can do, make, let everybody make money online. You know, and, and let the merchants, let the merchants have more, uh multiple stream of income. Don't charge them anything, let them make more money, right? And then the, and then affiliate, you know, we have our new tech line is, we have the biggest, the largest franchise system. But we don't own any franchises at all, right? So we are, we are, we are big franchise because we, we take, we, we, we take the percentage from every, every businesses. And uh I'd be looking forward, we are talking, I was talking to what's it? You know, the, the new, the new uh shopping experience will be like, you are going into like uh the metaverse, you know, you go into. The, the, you know, the shop, virtual shop, you pick up the stuff and then uh you put it in your shopping cart. And then the stuff can maybe delivered to you or something like this. I think that will be the new, uh you know, like, like you are actually going to. Uh uh like say, you know, Kuching now, we have a virtual, that's what we discussed at the beginning, was it, right? And at Kuching, we want to have a virtual Kuching inside. It's an online thing where you go, you know, you walk on Kapitalk Street. And then you can go into the shop, pick up the stuff and put it there and then, yeah, so, so I think.
Idea was there before it was even possible. We wanted to make the whole city virtual. And I think virtual reality and augmented reality were not, you know, uh something that the world has had caught on at that time.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we, you know, we are, we have four ideas of what we want to do, but I think in a few, uh, few years, that will be happening, you know? You can go into a virtual Bintulu, we can go into virtual Sibu. Or Miri, go in there and then pick up stuff, you know, just to walk on the street. So that, that will be the new experience. I mean, that, that is probably uh three part, four point O, five point O, you know, so it'll be exciting. And so, yeah, you know, we are, we are definitely excited about what, what we're doing at the D Bazar. And I think, uh you know, we, we appreciate, you know, the, the, the team is growing and. And more people and, and with more, more businesses are happening now. Uh more merchants are taking D Bazar as a payment method and uh, yeah, so um. Great, you know, uh you know, we, we've been waiting for what's it to come over since uh twenty twenty. You were supposed to fly over, right? In March of uh, was it March of twenty twenty or?
Uh no, it was uh, I think uh end of twenty twenty and uh. Uh yeah, the borders were closed.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he was supposed to be uh with us, but you know, uh. You know, we, we are excited now that uh that, that you are here finally, you know?
Sorry, 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 I, I made a mistake. So I was supposed to come in two thousand nineteen. And then uh there was a dispute with India, so the airspace was closed. So I couldn't fly and then, and then COVID started.
Yeah, but, but I mean, it's uh, it's, it's probably a blessing and this guy is now, suddenly everybody is, you know, you know, where, 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 where speed up. Three to five years ahead because now everybody is aware of uh online. You know, anything has to be online or online to offline and offline to online both things. Alright, well, great. Uh thank you everyone for, for joining today. Uh Jason, back to you.
Yep, thank you everyone for sharing. Thank you, Vasee, thank you, Ken, uh for the wise words and insight on uh D Bazar. Uh so with that, um. Are we accepting questions, Q and A?
Yeah, I mean, uh if there's any questions uh from. From our partner affiliate, we are more than welcome to, you know, any questions, you can type into, type into the chat group.
Yeah, so if anyone has a question uh for any of us, uh just type it in the chat.
Mandarin is also okay?
Yep.
Uh Mister Hall. Hello, Singapore. Yeah, Mister, Mister Hall uh uh came back from Singapore and then now he's back in Singapore, he's from Kuching. He's been with us uh for, for quite a while, he's been working on the finance side. Uh so, so good, uh good to have uh him joining us in uh from Singapore. Okay, I think, I think uh if we don't have any question, we let what's it go back to uh.
Oh, there's a question.
Yep.
Oh yeah, that's it. That's a question for you.
Yes, sure. Uh so the thing is that, as I explained earlier, that, you know, we are constantly refining and improving our application. So um I think um while we are, you know, still very aggressively expanding and, you know, we're including more new features. So the reason why you have new versions always is because um. I think the credit would go to the development team, the programmers who are actually sitting and typing on their computers, their speed is quite fast. So we're coming out with, you know, new features uh very fast, very soon. And then they are approved by the Xco and then, you know, we uh pour it out for our users to, you know, have a better experience, have a better feature. So unless you don't want to see improvement, we can stop the updates.
Yeah, I think uh, I think the, the uh question was on the Android merchant app. I was it, the Android merchant app, so we have uh, we, we have the, the web-based uh. Merchant portal now, so you might want to explain more of that.
Okay, sure. So right now, okay, now I understood your question. So the thing is that, uh you know, uh the merchant app is uh very hardware intensive. It has more to do with hard, hardware than the software. So there's, you know, the phones, notification, keeping the screen on and then. Uh making the printer work and so on. So most of the things that, you know, related with the hardware, that's what makes the app quite bulky. And then um uh the other thing uh with that is that, you know, the compatibility issue comes in. Because, you know, one printer is different from another, one device is different from another, versions are different and so on. Uh with software, there is a lot of capability to take care of that, but when it comes to um, uh you know, hardware, it uh. Sometimes become a little troublesome and catering for a wide array of, you know, because. Android, I think right now has thousand and twenty seven different devices that work with Android all around the world. By devices, I mean the models, the different kinds of models, there are one thousand twenty seven models which use Android as their operating system. So catering for all of them, you know, sometimes becomes a very big challenge. So what we did was, we came up with a solution where, you know, we're moving our whole merchant portal. Uh every feature that you find inside the merchant app, we're moving it to the uh a web-based platform. So basically, it will be a web app which opens up in your phone's browser and it behaves exactly like a mobile app. But you will not face any issue of, you know, having different versions, different version of Android or different, you know. Uh device or device type, anything, all of that will be gone away. And you will have every single user, every single merchant will have the same experience as the other person. And it will all, you know, become very uniform. So that's what we are working on right now and uh we will be rolling that out very soon.
Yeah, uh Mister He, I think, right? Uh yeah, we, we are doing the finer, finer phase of testing. On, on this uh web-based uh merchant portal. So I think should be within, uh within a few weeks, uh we should be able to launch that. And so, so hopefully with that, you know, we take care of Apple, we take care of, while we and Android altogether.
Yeah, Mr. Ken, Mr. He gave another question, uh you might want to take that in the chat.
Any plan to make video available, D Bazar apps or merchant products page in the future? I, yes, actually, uh we are waiting for everything to, to finalize and then uh. Definitely a video, a video would definitely uh more helpful than anything else. Absolutely, I, I absolutely, so. Uh and then we have uh a question or a note from Mister Hall, he said that. Uh to include, what's it? Uh to include uh Singapore phone number, user to be re, be able to register, so. Uh I think right now is only plus six, right? Plus six five will not work.
Yes, yes. Yep, we'll, we'll open that up, we'll open that up.
Yeah, yeah, so uh just uh go back to Mister He again, uh we will be. Uh releasing the videos, if the video is done, we'll be releasing to uh send it out to WhatsApp, but to our affiliate and also. Big Jason, Jason, we usually post it in, in uh YouTube, right, Jason?
Yes, it'll be in YouTube.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I think uh Eric, Eric and the team is working on the video.
Yep.
So this uh maybe, maybe uh maybe Jason, what we can do is to. To announce it, you know, certain video, we're coming out at what time and, and what time with the month, next month or something like this.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. So each time a video comes up, we will announce uh this video is available uh as materials for everyone to use.
Yeah. Okay, and uh any other questions from anyone? If not, I think we, I, I see Pastor Su is here with us. Uh Pastor Su, are you, are you with us? If you are with us, uh we'd like to request for a uh, a prayer for our closing. If Pastor Su is here with us. Pastor Su is from Sibu.
I guess I am.
Hey, uh Pastor Su.
Yes.
Yeah, we are uh, what's it, is going back uh on the twenty eighth and then of course, so we'd like to. Uh pray for him uh or accept journey back, uh but so. Yeah, uh but before, before we do that, uh there's uh, there's a question here from Paul.
Yes.
What programming language experience needed if you are, was looking for joining?
Uh so before that, I think Mister uh he also posted a comment, so he was asking about the YouTube link to introduce the product of merchant. Uh so uh yes, uh we understand your question that you want to have um. Inside when the merchant's menu opens up, you would want a video over there or a YouTube link over there, right? Which would describe a product or multiple products or a promotion of your uh, uh you know, your shop, right? So yes, uh we uh do have that in plan. We had already discussed for three point O. Uh to include that because as you understand, videos are quite heavy. Uh so we are working on a way that, you know, we just don't throw in a link and then, you know, face trouble later on. So we're trying to, you know, do it right so that uh we can have videos but a good experience. So definitely, that will be there quite soon, quite soon. So uh moving on to uh Paul's question. Um so uh our backend is done in PHP, so you can either be a backend or a frontend developer. I'm sorry to all of the non-technical people, but because the question is technical, I have to answer it that way. So you can either be the, you know, part of the backend team or the frontend team, or you could be a full stack developer as well. So our backend is done in PHP, our database is. So our backend is done in PHP, our database is in MySQL, and uh admin panel is, you know, in HTML, CSS and JavaScript. For the frontend, we are using for our mobile app, we are using React Native, so React Native with JavaScript. Uh, so if you have expertise with React Native, or if you have expertise with, you know, uh, the PHP Lamp stack, um, uh, you can definitely reach out to us, and we will be, you know, uh happy to review your CV and uh try to bring you onboard to use I.
Yeah, okay, uh, this, yep, okay, uh, it's already nine twenty one, uh, so we, Pastor Sue, uh, you know, we uh like to uh have you uh do a, a closing prayer for us.
Okay. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you very much that we have such a wonderful time here tonight, and we have a wonderful brother, Wasip, with us tonight here. And Lord, we thank you that you have led D Bazar, the whole team, with our CEO, Mr. Kent, so far from beginning until now. And Lord, we ask for your mercy hands to be upon the whole team for the rest of the time, and in the future, you lead us in your mercy hands. Lord, we also pray that Mister, uh, our brother Wasip is going back on the twenty eighth. We ask for mercy journey and keep him a safe journey to home. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, amen, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor Sue.
Welcome.
Pleasure speaking to you.
Thank you, Mr. Wasip.
Wow, big one, one big family, thank you everybody, and good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.